Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 PM regular City Council meeting of June 14th, July 12th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. We're so glad to see many of you out here engaged in the civic process. We're particularly happy tonight to have six students visiting with us representing CBRE, and they're here to study Bakersfield, four of them from USC Fight On and two from other schools. But welcome to Bakersfield, and thank you for studying planning here. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Kevin Hardy, who's the lead pastor at Olive Knolls Church of the Nazarene, to lead us in the invocation. We're so grateful, Pastor, for your church's role in education. I know that we hear very good things about your school. And then, following the invocation, we'll have Nargus, sorry, Obaid, City Fellow. I'll try it again. Nargus Obaid, City Fellow and graduate of CSUV. She's going to lead us in the pledge. She has been a Fellow in our City Clerk's office, and she has a BS in Psychology, minors in Political Science and Philosophy, and Public Relations Officer at CSUV Philosophy Club, Alpha Chi National College Honor Society at CSUV, and she's a member of the California Scholarship Federation. Welcome to both of you, and thank you for participating. Would you all please stand?
Good afternoon. It's good to be with you. I became pastor of the Olive Knolls Church in April of 2020. That does sound familiar to you. That was a unique time to become pastor. I spent 17 years on the East Coast in Maryland, three years in Michigan, and when I came to Bakersfield, I said, "I have moved to paradise." Most people laugh at me when I say that, but it truly is a wonderful place to be. It's delighted to pray with you today. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, thank you for this city council. Thank you for this mayor, these council members, those who serve in the city government. I ask, oh God, that you would pour your blessings upon them this evening as they deliberate, make decisions. Give them wise counsel, give them wisdom beyond themselves collectively and individually. And I pray your blessings upon this city, upon our community, upon all those who are less fortunate, those who are struggling, upon all of our businesses, our churches. Lord, it's just great to live here in Bakersfield in Kern County. We thank you for your grace and your love, and we ask for your blessing this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Nargis.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the City Council's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received three speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Melanie Ramirez on item 7C.
Welcome, Ms. Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Melanie Ramirez, and I'm here again on behalf of the Youth Coalition, Students Working Against Tobacco. We believe that the tobacco retail license will create a positive impact on our community by making it harder for youth to access vapes as well as reduce usage in Bakersfield. A strong TRL will help protect Bakersfield youth from nicotine addiction, tobacco-related disease, and even death by preventing illegal sales to youth through this enforcement policy. We hope that this ordinance passes so we will be able to see the impact it makes on our community and once again focus on our education. On behalf of SWAT, we thank you for considering the Bakersfield TRL. We know this will make a difference in the lives of Bakersfield youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Next speaker, please.
Patsy Romero, also regarding item 7C.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of you for taking the time to listen to us. We've given you facts, we've given you stats, we've given you everything, I think. For the last 15 years, this is what I have been doing, and hopefully, hopefully, it will happen. You'll hear me screaming if it does, but you know, I actually just got out of chemo from lung cancer, but this will make all the difference in the world. It will protect our youth. It will protect our leaders of tomorrow. It will protect the ones who will be sitting up there. So I just thank all of you for listening to us, for taking the time to see why this is so important to us, to the city of Bakersfield. Right now, I'm just, I'm just so happy that maybe this will happen, so I'm excited. And a note of good news, my tumor shrank from nine Cs to five Cs, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. We really appreciate all that you do also for cancer advocacy. I always see you out there, and thank you so much. You're so happy for the good news.
You're always there supporting us, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to join you in thanking Ms. Patsy Romero and all of her advocacy throughout the years and all of the work she's done for our community. We always knew that she was a fighter, and she's fighting hard for, on behalf of our entire community, and we're going to get this done tonight. Thanks to our colleagues, and I want to commend Councilmember Arias for his leadership in this particular policy endeavor, but it's been a long time coming, so thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
Camille Hill, regarding item 7F.
Also known as Empress Noent to Ezekiel LaLo. Good evening. After I've suffered a while, then I know the Lord will bless me. Those were the refrain that I heard over and over again from my mother, who came here in 1946 in the Mayflower District, now known as Southeast Strong. I've been working alongside Jason Cader since the beginning of the year for the TCC Project, Transformative Climate Communities. I grew up in the southeast. I now live on the border of the southeast and east. I am in Councilman Gonzalez's ward. I live about two blocks from California, but I was brought here in 1946, and that's why I know about the southeast. It is in my heart, and I have worked there. I went to school there, and I've seen little change. It has been an underserved and long-neglected community. I have been away and around the world and have come back because of generational wealth. My granddaughter asked me to come back, and I am now here speaking in support of, we have worked hard out there, of transforming that community. Let's see the change that my mother did not see in her lifetime. She left here in '93. May she rest in paradise. I am now working for and speaking for my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren. Let's transform that community. Let it be an area that we are all proud to say, "I live in that area too." Let it not be an area that is less than any other area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7AD for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7A, transmitting corrected minutes, and a staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7F, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any member wish to recuse themselves from the item? Does any member wish to pull an item for separate consideration?
Yes.
Apologize. I'm going to pull 7F for separate consideration tonight, along with 7P. 7P by Councilmember Gray, and Councilmember Weir, if you can help me with this.
B-H-I.
I got you. Also items 7G, 7H, 7I, and 7J. So to confirm, we're pulling items 7F, 7G, 7H, 7I, 7J, and 7P. I move to adopt all items aside from those that are pulled.
If you have a motion, please cast your votes. Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Cor had to step out.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Cor absent.
Thank you. And now, item 7F. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is regarding the resolution authorizing the application to the Strategic Growth Council Transformative Climate Communities Implementation Grant Funds. This has been a long time in the making, a project that has required much community effort and outreach, and we have many stakeholders tonight that have participated in this proposal. And I'd like just to take a moment to have all those individuals, if they will, to please rise to be recognized. Let's give them all a round of applause if we can. So through extensive outreach in the community, relationship-building, conversations, hearing people's concerns and their hopes, we were able to aggregate many of the different priorities that we heard from throughout the southeast Bakersfield. And I am happy that Councilmember Arias and I are able to partner together as council members, along with some of our key individuals within City Hall, who have been working diligently on this proposal. And I'd like to ask them to come up and just to share with the whole council and the community an overview of this application.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Jason Cader, I'm the Economic and Community Development Manager for the City of Bakersfield. And as you saw tonight, since earlier in this year, we've been meeting at least monthly with a series of stakeholders to focus in southeast Bakersfield. Our program's application is focusing on approximately five square miles of southeast Bakersfield with the connection into downtown, really with the intent of investing in that area. We have vetted projects, programs to support the allocation. The application we're submitting will be for about $29.5 million. We have, since our beginning, had somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 either meetings that we've hosted with the community, events that we've attended to get input through our surveying efforts for our projects, our elements, and our Safe Routes programming. Probably over 700 residents have responded for our programs and projects. And so tonight, we're requesting your authorization to submit this application that really reflects our work and the work of our residents. We are looking at a series of projects that include working with the Senior Center and the Housing Authority of the County of Kern to help rebuild that facility into a mixed-use facility with affordable senior housing as well as a brand-new senior center. We're looking to support the efforts to improve MLK Boulevard. We're looking at potentially adding some trees in MLK Park as part of that effort for reimagining MLK Park. We're working with the collaborative from KCCD, Grid Alternatives, as well as CAP-K to do solar improvements and energy efficiency for homeowners in that area, and as well as other programs. So this is really going to be a collective effort, a number of projects that really are investing in this area, and will really be part of a collaborative that we've built and are excited to submit and see what we can do for that area.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, and great job, Jason, Mr. Cader, for your diligence and hard work throughout the process, and to all of ECD's staff, and all the folks who have been involved within City Hall, and to all of our stakeholders as well. I really appreciate all of the efforts that have been made.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to move item 7F for adoption.
If you have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Weir, item 7G, please.
Actually, if it's okay, I would like to talk about items 7GH and I all at the same time, so. I know we're here to talk about affordable housing tonight. I came here with total intention of voting for it, but I just have, I have a question. So on the first set of units that we're talking about, Fourth and R, you know, I do a rudimentary or estimation about what the costs are and come out, and actually, Fourth and R was like, wow, that's a shock. It was $190,000 a unit, which is cheap for affordable housing. And then, Lutzring and White Lane did a rudimentary calculation for that, too. It comes out to about $330,000 per unit, which is, I think, probably average for affordable housing. But at 534th Street, 36 one bedrooms and a senior center, and out of the total amount of money that's allotted for that project, or the total cost, I subtracted $5 million out of that just for the senior center. But the project per unit still comes out to $650,000 a unit, and that's my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. I'm going to use a lifeline, and luckily, a couple of our experts are here in the audience. Mrs. Byers, Mr. Cader, would one of you like to help out on that item?
Councilmember, thank you. If you want me, I can address the senior center project. So that facility is a four-story facility. The senior center portion is actually closer to about $10 or $11 million for that project because it's a couple floors, with part of the space on that floor being reserved for resident services. It also has prevailing wage due to some of the leveraging sources that it's going to be incorporating. And then, lastly, the design, the construction type is a higher cost in terms of the 16-unit complexes, looking at more of a four, like a one-story garden style. So between prevailing wage, the senior center being a much higher cost, that's where you're seeing the numbers escalate in that project.
Okay, aren't they all prevailing wage?
So 610 Fourth Street will not be subject to prevailing wage. That will be based on the sourcing and the amount of source from some of the funds. Jenny, you can speak to the I Street project on prevailing wage, but for the Fourth Street project with 16 units, that will not be subject to prevailing wage.
Okay. Even at $10 million, it's not going to whittle that down to, maybe it wills it down to $500,000 a unit, but it still seems high. Seems like a lot.
It's a higher-cost project, and again, a lot of that's back to the construction type, that it'll be using the four-story facility as well as, yeah, the bottom floor, so. But it is higher than what you're seeing with the garden style.
Okay. All right. Well, I move approval of all three items.
Were there four, and then you're just doing GH and I right now, and then J is going to be separate? Yes, okay. So you have a motion. Oh, Councilmember Gray. Go ahead.
Ken, thanks for bringing that to the table. As Ken said, I am, you know, I am total support of affordable housing in the city. We need it desperately. We're way behind, and there's no doubt. But I was at an interesting meeting yesterday with the Builders Association in Bakersfield, and I learned a lot. Of course, we, you know, we're in that industry ourselves, but I learned more about new construction in this city because we haven't done that for a while. And it amazes me that we are, these 36 units that we're talking about, are on about 1.7 acres that we're cramming 36 units in. That's very, very dense when the average home is a quarter acre for a residential R1 home. And so I was talking to representatives from D.R. Horton, and they were stating, I said, "Well, what, you know, what are your homes running for now as a new home?" And their homes are starting at $275,000 for not a one-bedroom home, but for a two- and three-bedroom home on a quarter-acre lot. It just, again, I question what is going on in this state that's driving people out of it, that is making it not affordable, but less affordable, to be able to build housing when a private sector builder can build a, you know, single resident home on a quarter acre for $275,000? And the closest we're coming to that is the 16 units for $190,000. So it just amazes me. I think it's something that we, as taxpayers, need to continue to talk about, that any time you get the government involved in a project, it ends up being two and three times more expensive than what it would be if you hired, you know, good, reliable, private-sector contractors. So here we are again, spending a whole lot of taxpayer money, and that is unnecessary when we could do the same thing for such less cost. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment, and I appreciate the fact to be able to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I see this as an opportunity to actually shed light on one of my favorite projects. Ms. Lily Parker is here in the room and has been a real champion for the Bakersfield Senior Center far long ago, before TCC, before this project came to life. And she's a real champion for not only the southeast and the Transformative Climate Communities Grant, but also for our seniors on a monthly basis. I know that she and her team serve thousands of meals to, you know, seniors not just in southeast Bakersfield, or not even just central Bakersfield, but throughout the entire city. And she and her team have been doing that for a very long time, and I just want to shed light and really give an opportunity to her. If she would like to make some comments, please come up. But I really want to shed light on the fact that this is more than, yes, we need affordable housing. This is an affordable housing project, but it is so much more than that. It's about, you know, continuing their work as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and doing all the good stuff that they do for our senior community. So please.
Thank you. Your concerns are heard. But what I think needs to be included into the housing element is we're going solar, for one thing. And I don't know that any other, or, you know, like the building association, if what they were looking at involves solar or anything like that. There's a lot of elements or amenities as well that we're going to be providing, not only to our seniors, but residents as well. One of the main things is, this community has been underserved for a long time. I've been here in this position for nine years as the executive director. I've built some wonderful relationships with the city as well as with the housing as well, but also with this housing portion, and I'm sure Mr. Boyle can speak toward the need for housing. It is something that is needed. Again, additional services that we, you know, do and will be providing also in mobility, transportation, because it's overlooked. The funding in the past has not been there, and I think this just brings us closer to the things that are needed in this community.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, if you could shed a little bit more light on all of the many facets of your nonprofit and what you do for the community.
I'd be forth and happy to. Thank you. Yes, Bakersfield Senior Center, we do provide a nutritional lunch program five days a week to seniors 60 and over, and they're hot meals. We also provide education on health, also nutrition as well. We also provide exercise programs for our seniors, and it doesn't matter if that senior can walk in, if they're willed in, if they walk in on a cane. However, there is a program as far as exercise go, because we know, and when I say "we," it's because I'm a senior, too. I'm hitting 70 in about 30 days, okay? So I know how important exercise, being active, and keeping this entire body moving, it's important. We want to give seniors a place that they feel good to come and socialize, as well as a place that they can call home, because one of the main things that I know as a director is, when seniors are isolated, chronic diseases increase. And so we're providing a place for them to come, socialize, and age in place, in the community where they've spent a lot of their time. And so with that, that's just some of the services that we provide. And in our TCC proposal... And in our TCC proposal, we're even asking for electric vehicles. And because we know a lot of seniors don't have vehicles as far as transportation, they'll be able to rent vehicles to get to the store, to get to the pharmacy, and what have you. All I can say is, until you get here, you don't get it. You don't understand it. Because I tell you, I can remember in my early 30s, and I was working at the telephone company as a manager then, and they were having symposiums on healthcare, Medicare, and I'm like, who cares about all that? I'm in my 30s. Guess what? It's a priority today. It is a big priority. I pay attention now, because I'm there. And so I'm going to invite each and every last one of you. Come, visit, come see what we do. Come, come look at our plans, our construction plans, our site and conceptual plans that we have planned for Southeast Strong Bakersfield Senior Center.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I could listen to you all day long. But I think point taken, you know, on any given day, you know, when I visit, there's at least 50 to 60 seniors, and that's without housing. These individuals come from the community to come and enjoy the space, do physical activities, and socialize, which is just so important to their health. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you also to Mayor Gold for supporting us. Mayor Assistant Vice Gonzalez, Vice Mayor, y'all know what it is. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lily Parker. I don't think we could have put it more eloquently than you have. And, you know, I had the opportunity to see your senior center's great programming at the Juneteenth event, where I think some of the most talented dancers in the city are at the senior center. And you guys got to catch their dance classes one of these days. I know I will. But I wanted to thank you for advocating, and for everyone advocating for all of the different creative ways in which we're addressing how to improve the built environment and the housing crisis within our city, county, state, and our nation. And I want to thank our city staff for getting creative in approaching this solution and being so community-forward, and having the community in mind and including them at every step of the way as an advocate. That is a very unique thing to see, where the city has done outreach and continues to. So I hope that your voices are heard loud and clear, and we're right there with you to champion that. You know, when we look at the data, exactly what Ms. Parker said, it's our seniors who are the most often, in the highest numbers, that make up our houseless population. Affordable housing is not only just the infrastructure, it's also having a home and living with dignity. And single-family housing has not solved the housing crisis so far alone. It's going to take house, single-family housing, as well as housing built-in density, affordable housing, multi-use facilities and housing with programming built-in. It's going to take all of the above. And so that's why I am thankful that at the city level, we are doing what we can to approach this housing crisis, because it's a cycle. Housing is cyclical, whether we're looking at how we have a houseless population, what drives that, and really, it is the amount of housing available and the type. So density is one of the solutions to that, and that is something unique to see at the city of Bakersfield. Not a lot of other cities have prioritized density in such a way, especially at the affordable housing context. I also want to highlight that today, in this moment, so many of our residents are just one paycheck away from losing their own homes, whether they call an apartment their home, whether they call a single-family home their home, whether they're renting, whether they're owning, and that's the reality. And it makes it that much more important and timely that we have every creative approach that we do in order to do what we can while costs are so high to build, or whatever the nature of it may be. This is a contribution, we're playing a part in the solution, and being proactive in that. And so I think that is worth commending, and I'm very appreciative of that, and for my colleagues who have been championing, whether it's, we've heard from folks, championing TCC, different programming, senior, affordable housing, and everything that our staff has presented on. So I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the good work, and really appreciate the city for building housing in all forms, at all levels, to keep it affordable at all levels. Like I said, housing is a form of giving folks dignity and providing that, and that's what we're doing here at the city of Bakersfield.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just quickly, you know, the cost per unit and the issues related to cost per unit, when it comes to affordable housing, is nothing new. One of the things that we've pressed upon as the Housing and Homelessness Committee to staff is to, you know, figure out ways and allow us to discuss and explore ways to build more housing more quickly and much more affordably for our community. And we know that we're in a crisis. We have to accelerate the production of affordable housing units that are safe, that are clean, and that are worthy of our residents, so that they can live in dignity. And I just want to commend city staff, because I think these projects really reflect a lot of creativity, and a lot of thinking outside of the box, in order for us to develop more units more quickly. And so I hope that we can only accelerate this work as we move forward, and look forward to the future projects that we have in the pipeline. So I want to commend staff. Thank you.
You have a motion on item 7GHI. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Now, item 7J, Councilmember Weir.
Yes, I just wanted to pull this for a separate vote.
Separate vote? Okay.
Motion to approve item 7J.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting no, and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, item 7P, Councilmember Gray.
I mean, this is just, oh, by the way, Ms. Parker, thank you for speaking, and thank you for your hard work that you're doing. I'm thrilled to see what you're doing. And sister, I am there. I'm almost 67 years old, so I totally understand. I, yes, I will. But I hope you understood my point. It wasn't against affordable housing in any way, shape, or form. It's just, we're spending more money than we should be spending if we could do it more efficiently, but government doesn't seem to be able to do that well. Anyway, on a lighter note, we have a wonderful manager of our visitor bureau in Bakersfield, David Lyman, and he's just doing an excellent job. And when I read this, I thought, you know, this needs to come to the community's attention of what he and his small team, I believe there's only five, is that correct, Scott? Five different employees are doing, they've attended 12 trade shows and vendor showcases across USA and Canada to bring more awareness to Bakersfield, to bring more events in, to build our transient occupancy tax in the city of Bakersfield. And they just signed something to host the Parallax West Coast Labor Day Championship for the next three years. So I was just really impressed with that, and I wanted to give David Lyman and his team a shout-out, because, you know, that's building economic benefits to our city, all of our restaurants, our hotels, and so forth. That's fabulous. So anyway, just wanted to say, good job, team.
Councilmember Gray, can we have a motion on that?
Oh, I'll make a motion to... Make a motion to accept agreement P.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public hearings.
Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Please quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the city clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing, item 9A, public hearing to consider fiscal year 2324 Action Plan Amendment Number One to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to transfer funds from the new construction assistance, 235,669.57 home, and CHDO set aside, 225,893 home. Additional program income, 62,365.51 home, and self-help enterprises, 5,550 home. CHDO set aside, 250,203.15, and new construction assistance for 480,237.77, to Fourth Street Apartments, for a total amount of $1,259,919. We've received a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence regarding this item.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Scott Andrews, our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, our dynamic team is making their way up to help cover this item. Mrs. Byers, weigh in, please.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, Mayor, and Councilmembers.
Ms. Byers, it looks like we have some people who need to leave at this time, so if you would just hold for one minute, and we'll give them a chance to leave. Thank you all for being here. This would be a good time to leave if you do not want to hear this item. Ms. Byers.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends approval of the Action Plan Amendment. The city receives funding annually from HUD, Housing and Urban Development. We identify where we're going to place the funding under our five-year consolidated plan. Every year thereafter, we do an action plan that identifies more specifically where that funding is going to go. We have certain pots set aside of that funding. Some of it's for home, for Cheeto. But we received a project for the Fourth Street Apartments, and with that, we looked at the funding that we had available to see how we could assist them to the greatest extent possible. And so that's why you see a variety of these sources of funding being allocated for a total of $1,259,919. Some of, one of them is from the self-help enterprises, which was $5,550. That was a project that they did for the Chardonnay tract. It was a housing. We had set aside the funds form. They didn't use all of those funds. There was a remainder of that funding, and so that's why we're proposing it. We were talking earlier, or council was talking earlier, about how much funding it takes for affordable housing. We agree with you. One of the things that we have talked about in our Housing and Homeless Committee is when a project uses tax credit, there is typically four to eight funding sources that are required to make that project happen. With each funding source, there's a different variety of requirements. If you do prevailing wage, it's not just that extra cost of prevailing wage, there's also Davis Bacon requirements, and affordable housing then requires, based on that funding source, 20-year monitoring or 30-year monitoring. And so each unit is kind of constructed with a different source. That's just kind of a background of what we do and how we fund projects. But with this one, we are requesting that five different sources be allocated to apply towards the Fourth Street Apartments. I'd like to reiterate that we are not taking away from new construction assistance. Instead, what we've done is, we identified new construction assistance. We have a project that has applied. We're requesting that it be applied to a very specific project. And with that, that concludes the Action Plan Number One. We have met all regulatory requirements and noticing, and so we are going to request that council approve this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Mr. Andrews, anything further?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. So at this time, item 9A is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Welcome.
Mayor, Councilman, City Management. My name is Wendell Wesley Jr., and facilities like this, you see them all around town, they're on the west side. There's senior communities of people that are aging, some assisted living, I think is what they call them. And they have a community center built in, they have transportation that's built in, they probably have activities director. All this goes to our wellness. You know, we have a lot of homeless people on our streets right now. And when people become homeless, then not shortly after, if they don't get the resources needed, their mental stability is in jeopardy, pretty much from the moment they get an eviction notice, or they're living in a place that's just not safe. And that's not safe for law enforcement. I'm sure they will tell you, it's very difficult dealing with people that's not mentally well. And we already know through surveys and that it actually costs less money to keep people housed than it does to have them on the street. So I really appreciate and like what's happening here, because I saw the funding that you guys did towards the navigational center and the mission at Kern, and all the extra-added facilities you have there. It's a different class of people, but it's basically the same principle. It's helping to go towards to keep these people well, you know? And having a home is the first step of that, but if you can have all these other amenities, it's best and better for everyone involved. So I would urge everyone to support the senior center, because it's more than just a housing project. It's a wellness project as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Move the approval of the Action Plan Amendment.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for the Complete Streets Resolution that we had on tonight. I just, we've stated before, but we've, we had, you know, five years ago, we had 27 fatal collisions. In '22, we had 66 fatal collisions. These are people in our community dying a violent death, because our streets could be made safer, and we're going to make efforts to make them safer, and the Complete Streets Resolution is one of the first steps. And we're going to move forward with an ordinance, and staff is moving forward with traffic calming and different types. We're on track this year to continue to grow that number, and it's very troubling. Not only the fatal collisions... Not only the fatal collisions, but also, we pushed two thousand injury collisions a year. There's people in our community suffering injury from, again, these violent car crashes. So, appreciate staff moving forward, and look forward to making our streets safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, it is forecasted to be a hundred and fourteen, perhaps a hundred and sixteen degrees in Bakersfield. Obviously, this is a huge concern for some of our most vulnerable populations, but certainly all of us. To be exposed to that temperature is very dangerous to anyone's health. And so I'm very pleased that Assistant City Manager Scott Andrews, along with many folks in City Hall, Public Works Director Greg Straklous, answered my call yesterday, quite literally, and got straight to work, so that we can provide two options for community members this weekend. Number one, MLK Center will be open and available for residents to cool off, and as well as the ice rink, the city's own owned ice rink, the Valley Children's Ice Rink, will be open with extended hours, in order for residents to find a cool place to stay and to keep cool. So for the benefit of the public, the ice rink will be available, and we'll be open on Friday from nine AM to six PM, on Saturday from eight AM to nine PM, and on Sunday from nine AM to six PM. And kudos to the staff and the management at the ice rink for being so willing to extend those hours beyond normal business hours for the public. And that is free to enter the building. They have to pay extra if they want to skate during the skating time, but you can certainly hang out there. I think I'm going to spend some time there on Sunday myself. And then, the recreation and parks will open, MLK Community Center Cooling Station from noon until five PM on Saturday and Sunday. So, again, thank you to staff for really getting to work and getting on this very quickly, given the extreme heat and the risk to public health this weekend. And my hope is that everyone stays safe and has a cool place to be over the weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to join Councilmember Smith in commending staff for all of the efforts being taken to increase roadway safety. Today, we saw and approved the yellow flashing beacons at Golden Valley High School, which will bring increased roadway safety to my ward, as well as Councilmember Arias's ward, where residents have for years shared their concern. We've had youth come to our city council meetings, heard them as I went door-to-door. That is a, that is the prime concern of residents in that area, in those neighborhoods, where there are not one, not two, but three schools within less than a mile radius. So, students walking to elementary school, junior high school, and high school will now feel a little bit safer getting there. Their parents will feel a little bit safer, that their children are safe on their way to and from school. But just overall, I think it creates and changes the culture of what our priorities as a city are, is that we care about you and your life, no matter if you're walking, cycling, you're in a car or vehicle. You should not lose your life in a fatal car accident, which we have been seeing, and I've been sharing, the increases I've seen within Ward Seven. And these seem to be unique to the south, South Bakersfield area. So, wanted to thank you for that, and for the Complete Streets policies and efforts that are coming forward, as we continue to create safety with protected bike lanes and other exciting things that are coming down the pipeline. All of those things really save lives, they truly do. And a complete street means that everyone feels safe going down that road. And I'm so glad to see that that's a priority here in our city. So, Director Straklous, thank you so much for your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't believe our amazing city manager's not here to listen to all the good stuff that we're doing, but I just want to commend staff on all the great work that we're doing, from the tobacco retail license getting approved tonight, to the flashing yellow beacons that we've been working towards. And thank you, Greg, and your team for getting that done. Looking forward to construction and that going up, the Complete Streets Resolution, and soon to come the ordinance. But there's so much more work to be done. So I just want to say thank you to my cat off, to you, Jason, as well as Jenny, for all the hard work that you're doing. And to all the advocates, thank you so much for constantly driving us forward. We could not do it without you. Many of you have opened up your doors to your facilities, some of you to your homes, some of you to your gardens. You know, thank you so much. You guys are the epitome of what true community organizing is, and I think it's time that we bring that funding home for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Is that you, Joe, in the audience?
Thank you so much. Joe Shay from our governor's office is visiting with us. I thought, that is him. Thank you for joining us today. So many of you have commented on the positive improvements in our park, and in our many parks, and then also on the help of our park rangers deterring unwanted and destructive behavior in our city parks. We didn't have an opportunity to recognize this month, which is Recreation and Parks Month, but I had the pleasure yesterday of presenting a proclamation, you'll see up there, to our park rangers, for Tato Martin and Osario. Congratulations, thank you so much. And our Director, Rick Anthony, thank you for all of your efforts. And to all of you who are serving in our parks, thank you so much. And it's our privilege to be able to proclaim this month as Recreation and Parks Month in our city. So, seeing no other requests to speak, this meeting stands adjourned at six eleven. That's one of the faster meetings yet.